The whole meeting scheduled for tonight, almost two hours late. What we'll do is go around the room to introduce everybody that whoever may be watching at home.
Tom Irwin, fourth district alderman.
Erwin Levin's chief of police.
Joseph Flut, district one, all the person.
Melissa Daily Tribune.
Paul Shabelski, city clerk.
Chief, fifth district alderman.
Zach Coleman, Richard's liquor.
Scott Keller, alderman.
Shane Blazer, alderman.
Very good. So we'll go to item number two, discuss in the ordinance amending section twenty-five point seventeen, parent four of municipal code, increasing the maximum fine amount for possession of drug paraphernalia from five hundred dollars to fifteen hundred dollars.
Do you want me to speak?
Yeah, well technically underneath Robert's rules were we to have a motion in a second, then there'd be discussion on that. But I guess we have been pretty loose. So absolutely.
Well, I'll go ahead and throw a motion on the floor if you can discuss that. Given the last council meeting, I've done some reflecting on this and thought about some things that were said at that meeting. And what I would like to do is make a motion to increase the maximum out for drug paraphernalia to fifteen hundred dollars, given a three-tiered increment. Increase. So for example, we have a cell phone ordinance in town. Your first offense for talking on a cellphone is fifty dollar fine, second I believe is a hundred dollars, third and subsequent offense is two hundred dollars. If I'm correct on that, chief?
Yeah, don't go beyond the numbers, but you're right.
I would, uh, to add on to this motion, I would like to go two hundred and fifty dollars first offense, seven hundred and fifty dollars second offense, fifteen hundred dollars third and subsequent offense in that motion.
And I'll second that motion to continue discussion on it. So as we open up for discussion, yes.
I'm just curious, is there length of time, like what's considered a subsequent offense within a year, within three years, indefinitely?
I think within one year would be appropriate.
And that is a good question. How does that kind of fall with the bond book and?
I just want to interject that your first, what was the first amount?
Two fifty.
And that is less than the state. So can we go lesser than the state? I know we can go more severe than the state, but can we go below?
No, I don't, we cannot be less restricted than the state.
So you would have to start off into at five hundred to match the state of an increase from there.
Yep.
What about, um, tonight at finance? Did the court give, did you see that bond schedule or what the court?
No, I didn't.
Oh shit. The municipal court sent over a schedule of a deposit amount for sixteen and under. That's what they came up with for sixteen and under. My question was, I wanted to ask, that that two fifty was plus court cost, correct?
Yes.
And my other concern is if you look at, this is our current fine.
Yes.
Second offense, three thirteen. And that second offense for juvenile, that's our, our, just our general offense.
Okay. I, but you get me, it's, it's the same for adults.
Well, you can't, there's no court costs on juvenile citations.
You gotta plus cost.
Hundred plus cost, two hundred plus cost, three hundred plus cost.
Unless it's because it's municipal, maybe I didn't.
I didn't have the research because the city.
Yeah. Yeah, I haven't seen this before. Yeah, it just seems very funny tonight, we can't.
Okay, oh good. Yeah.
Otherwise, I guess it's, um, I don't know if the fine amounts have to be tweaked or not, but I I think Steve's pretty much right on the money. I completely agree with his motion. So.
And chief, I think the state says up to five hundred, just like the city does.
Right, it's up to five hundred.
So we wouldn't necessarily be less severe than the state. If I, if I'm thinking of this correctly. I just, I wanted to bring this to the city. I don't want to make work for your men harder. I want to be clear that I do fully support the police department, the work that your guys do. What I'm hoping to accomplish by doing this is sending a very strong message, as I said in council last month, that the city of Wisconsin Rapids will have a zero tolerance policy for drugs. And that if this is a lifestyle that you choose to participate in, that Wisconsin Rapids is not a community to do it in. I understand fully that the purpose of municipal citation sometimes is to give somebody that break so they're not getting hit with a state charge. But I believe given the times that we're in with the situations that have been occurring and the, basically the open drug use in our community, I believe this isn't something that we should be giving a break on anymore and sending that message like, ah, you know, you had a, you had a pipe that you're using to smoke meth, well this, well this right, you have to be municipal here and give you a break. I think either get state or municipal, it stings just as much.
Just for my, just so for the record, I'm comfortable with the tiered fines for the first, second, and third offense, rather than, you know, just hammering someone in the first place. So.
I fully support it also.
And the timetable is a year? Is that what we decided?
Oh, I don't even know what we decided.
You know?
I decided I'd be agreeable to within a one-year period.
There's anything of juvenile.
That's part of the resolution. It's, I think you have a good point, Joe.
Yeah.
On that.
No, it doesn't say.
Okay.
Juvenile one doesn't have a timetable on there?
The only, the only call I had was concerned about increasing it where this person that, I'll quote, stated that they know somebody that has fines up to over two thousand dollars. And they'll be in the jail maybe for thirty days to make it up. And now we're paying for room and board, jail, and meals, taxpayers' money, that type of thing. So, but being gradual, I think makes sense. And if you have a year, you know, between the times, much more palatable than.
I just want to, what the sheriff's department does is for inmates that are sentenced, they actually charge them a stay fee. And they, they bill the inmates for the services that they receive while sitting in jail. And now to be clear, the only way someone would go to jail is if they failed to pay the fine. And on municipal for Wisconsin Rapids municipal, if you're incarcerated on a municipal citation, you set that off at the rate of one hundred dollars a day. So if you have a thousand dollars in unpaid fines, you set it off in jail for a rate of ten days. Meanwhile, the jail will charge you for, for room and board. The other thing is, is maybe if we are worried about overcrowding in jail and or if the counties were involved overcrowding in jail, I know one thing what the county does to recruit, get money from people that stay in jail that don't pay their debts, is they run a tax intercept on them. And maybe, I know this would be a different discussion, but maybe that's something the city could explore in the future for recovering funds from municipal citations that are unpaid, instead of sending the people to jail and have them set it off. I've heard the counterargument on increasing this as well too of you're going to take money away from these people. They're not going to have money for food, they're not going to have money to pay their rent. My experience when I worked in the jail, the bulk of the population that is into the drug usage, they're a very transient population anyways. They don't particularly stay at one place, they go from place to place to place. So they're not, they're not paying rent, they're not taking care of themselves, buying food. And I think ultimately is, I don't think you should send a message by saying, you know, hey, we understand that you're using drugs, so, so we're going to be lighter on you and give you a lesser fine. But yet, you know, if you have somebody that's disorderly conduct with a motor vehicle, or somebody that's being a public nuisance, that you're going to say, well, I don't care if you got to pay rent, and I don't care if you got to buy groceries, we're gonna, we're going to stick it to you because you're down here squealing your tires and peeling off. I mean, if we're, if we want to truly do more for crime prevention in this community, or at least do something to get the crime out of here, I believe we have to do something to be more proactive on it, to just send the message.
Anybody else interested?
Well, I was just, just playing clarification. So I don't, I don't have the copy of the ordinance in front of me, I know it was in the pack in last month, but would he have to amend his motion if he wanted to make it a year, within a year or?
I think if we, if we all unanimously agree that he can amend this motion, this is pending a Robert's rules order for this. And does anybody have any objection to?
I don't have an objection, but we're talking a year from the first offense to the second. What about the second to the third? Is that a year too? I mean, just.
We, we're still entering December if you get first, second, and third all within that time. What if you get your ticket on December thirty first?
But my, my, my experience with it has been, it's been a twelve-month rolling period. So for example, in this case, if right now on June fifth, if I got pinched with drug paraphernalia, that would count as my first offense and starts twelve months clock. Now, if I go in August and get another one, another possession of paraphernalia, that would be my second offense. Then on May thirty-first of next year, if I got caught again with paraphernalia, that would be my third offense within side of a year, even though I'd be five days short of a full calendar year. After I pass that June fifth mark, that would then reset the one-year period.
If an officer stops you, what they're going to do is they're going to check for priors. And however many there are within the past year, that's going to, doesn't matter.
I agree with you. The twelve months from ticket one to ticket three.
So does anybody have any objection to Mr. Coles amending his initial motion?
I don't.
Okay. Then Paul, would you be able to?
Yeah, I just need the amounts for the first defense was two fifty, am I correct there?
Two hundred and fifty dollars first offense, seven hundred and fifty dollars second offense, fifteen hundred dollars third offense.
And somehow if that two fifty is not legal per se, then we would move it, it would bump up to whatever the state requirement is.
Okay, so.
So if it was five hundred.
Right, but he, he's, he's right.
Okay.
State is up to five hundred, so we'd be matching them. I mean, it's, five hundred right now is the maximum. So I think it's up to maximum. And, you know, even the state is up, the judge, what he's going to pose up to that five hundred.
Okay, sure. So Paul, would you read back the motion?
Yeah, I believe I have it correct, but I mean, feel free to, to help me out if we, we need some guidance here, but motion by Coles, second by Kupashek, to increase the maximum fine amount for possession of drug paraphernalia from five hundred to fifteen hundred, using a three-tiered system, starting at two hundred and fifty dollars for the first offense, seven hundred and fifty dollars for the subsequent second offense, and fifteen hundred dollars for the third offense. And that would be in a calendar year from the first citation, is that correct?
Probably not calendars, because calendar would be generated.
Oh, within a twelve-month period of the first.
Rolling, rolling twelve-month period.
Yeah, okay.
Do I have any further discussion? Not hearing any, I call for a vote. All those in favor of aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, with one member voting in, the dissension. So we will go on to item number three, consider revise in chapter twenty-two, section twenty-two point oh four of the municipal code to allow class A licensees to sell beer and other fermented malt beverages between the hours of eight AM and ten PM. The current ordinance prohibits sales after nine PM.
I hate to back up, I'm just curious, Sue's not here, we didn't need a two-thirds for that, did we, or? We don't, okay.
It's not charter order change.
Okay, good. Just wanted to double check. Sorry.
Okay. So what do we have for discussion here, Mr. Blazer?
Well, I think, Zach, correct me if I'm wrong, a couple of years ago, that changed where that, where the state law allowed municipalities to increase the beer sales until ten PM, correct? Or do you, are you aware of that?
Technically on that, it's up to the municipality as far as I know. It can actually go as long as twelve, or midnight for beer sales, but alcohol and wine, it's a state statute that you cannot sell past nine PM. So I believe it's up to the municipality.
I guess is this something that you obviously have a direct interest in and?
Definitely, yeah, I mean. I wouldn't be sitting here for hours past the meeting time otherwise. I guess my question that I would like to have answered today is why? And where did this come from? Oh, the mayor referred it at the last county council meeting because he just said that he's received a few, throughout his tenure as mayor, he's received a few, uh, people asking for him to change it, so he referred it to this meeting. Okay.
Well, so wait, wait, let me, for clarification, because I'm not understanding your concern. You're questioning why is this on the agenda for us to be deciding to change it from nine o'clock to ten o'clock? You're not questioning why we have it at nine o'clock and we've had it at nine o'clock for the longest time?
Yeah, that's not what I'm questioning. I'm questioning why is this being proposed today, and where did it come from?
It was to answer your question fully, to repeat what Paul said. The mayor brought it up for a referral at the last council meeting, and then we, Paul called me and said, hey, you want to schedule a committee of the whole meeting? And I, we had a couple of other items that are obviously on this, and that's all I know. So if anybody else else has got anything, it's, it's, it is a very interesting request, as far as I'm concerned. With a little bit of local government experience that I have, I know that a lot of communities are at nine o'clock PM. It's either nine o'clock PM or it's midnight. And typically, it's more in a rural area where you're going to see the midnight, and it's more urban areas that you see nine o'clock. I haven't, although I, I haven't done a thesis on this, but I, I haven't personally seen anything later than nine o'clock in an incorporated area, which meaning a city or village.
We do have two villages adjacent to the city that sell until midnight.
Oh, they do?
Yep, Beeren and Port Rivers.
Does Grand Rapids anywhere?
I don't know what Grand Rapids ordinance is. I don't know if they, I think they're, they do have a gas station, I think that's open till eleven. I'm not sure about Grand Rapids.
Because QuickTrip, I remember, it used to be an issue because they could sell till midnight, but then once.
Yeah, that's Beeren though, Cloverone.
No, on this side, south end.
Oh.
By Dripa.
Gotcha.
Isn't that gas station in Porridge County?
Which one?
The one in Kelly, exactly.
You is, you is the one.
Syracuse.
I was just going to, so is this something you're in favor of?
Oh, I mean, I guess there's a question of due diligence. Is this an issue that, well, I've had a couple of people bring it up in my tenure, and now we're going to propose to change a law that isn't necessarily broken, that we just bring up and we pull out of thin air and say, let's change the law in this area, not necessarily accounting for a small business that now has to pay to staff that. And, you know, for a chain store like a QuickTrip or Walmart, that's probably great. They're going to have staff there anyways. So, you know, as a small business owner, and I hate to sound selfish on this, because those businesses are great too. But I essentially have to change my business model in order to accommodate this. Or I don't do it and everybody else does, and then I might lose out on sales and being labeled as a place that isn't open late. You know, I guess, I think there's a lot of questions that you need to be asking of people, the tavern league, the police force, you know, and obviously we have a great representative here, but, you know, have enough questions been asked about this, or are we just putting this law into place? You know, if I have to pay twenty to thirty dollars more to staff that hour, hour and a half, over the course of a week, over the course of a year, we could be easily up over ten thousand dollars that I'm spending. Not to mention my slowest hour of every single week is from eight to nine PM. That's also generally the hour where we have risks of underage people trying to buy, people who have already been intoxicated trying to buy. And why on earth would we open up an additional hour of that, is my question.
Well, and then, again, to answer your question further, you're exactly right. Let's, let's get all this information and put it together. As far as a, a recommendation, I mean, this could even fail tonight, and then it wouldn't go on to the actual council floor. That was one of the things that I was going to bring up on this particular issue, is that, is it broken? You know, is it a case where there are businesses in town that are losing out because everybody is going to gas station in fifty-four, gas station in Saratoga, and is there a market of beer buyers from nine o'clock to ten o'clock that we're not supporting our local businesses? And we're actually kind of shutting our local businesses out. But this is very interesting with your perspective as being a local business owner, who is directly involved in the sale of beer, that is, you know, questioning what, what we have on the floor. And then further, there isn't any proponents of this legislative change that are here tonight. So that's really interesting. And again, and welcoming to hear, because the, those are definitely just the three points that you just brought up here, I never even thought of. You know, in terms of eight o'clock to nine o'clock is the slowest time. I think eight-thirty to nine o'clock is the most frequent time I buy beer, because they're trying to buy it in the city. But, uh, yeah. And then on top of it, going back to the concept of if it's not broken, should we fix it? And I've said this before, that as legislators, looking at policy and making a policy change, we really got to have substantial evidence to overturn the status quo. The status quo right now is a status quo for a reason, because it was either changed or made at one time. And it has carried us through and now, should we, you know, roll with the punches proverbially? Absolutely, if there is a concern. But with this, I mean, of all the telephone calls that I've ever received as, as, as a local legislator, I haven't ever had any instincts about this at all, so.
Well, the business aspect, um, I mean, if you really want beer between nine and ten, you're just going to go to one of the other villages. I mean, you're going to go get it, you're not going to just, oh darn it, it's nine o'clock, you know? I mean, let's be realistic, they're, they're going to make the drive.
There even could be more of an element where at nine o'clock, you're not really going to make the drive, but if it gets to ten o'clock, and it's getting kind of cloudy, you might make that drive, you know, so.
I mean, you could make the drive either way. Who knows what individuals do, you know, everyone's got their own thing.
Well, not hearing that we've had a problem and hearing from the businessman who sells the product, my inclination is that we leave as is, because I hear that there's evidence to change it. And surrounding communities who have a different time, but that, but we're, they're still satisfied with what we have in Rapids. So I mean, whatever is there now is there, as I take it. So I would move that we leave the united request.
So we have a motion on the floor to, uh, can we make a negative motion?
No, you can even just not, you can make a motion, you just not, you don't even have to do anything.
Yeah, we don't have to do anything. That's true.
Just information gathering.
Yeah. So how, how about this? Do you retract your motion?
I'll take it back.
Okay, do we have any objectors?
No.
With that said, do I have any further discussion? If I do not have any further discussion, item three will die on the floor, and we'll go to item four. No further discussion, item three is over, and we are addressing item four, discuss the creation of a legislative committee.
Thank you very much, guests, for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you for waiting two hours.
Yeah, sorry.
Take care.
So, item number four, discuss the creation of legislative committee.
I hate starting all the time, but, um.
You're, you're good anyway.
I am, I am, I am. Uh, I think, I think we need one. A lot of times, things come to property and finance that aren't property and finance. It just seems that's the committee that is kind of the default for, originally, the drug paraphernalia ordinance was supposed to come to us, I think, but not that, not that a committee, you know, some, you know, sometimes there's nothing on your agenda, sometimes there's, there's a lot of stuff. But I think we should have a dedicated committee that addresses all these issues. And the only, being the, I think I'm the only person on two committees right now. It can be a challenge, especially when they're on different nights.
Three.
That would be, I'm not going to be on three now, please, but, um, that's the only thing maybe to keep in mind is four of us, if my math is right, would probably have to be on multiple committees, so. As long as you think most of us would be willing to do that, I see no reason not to have this committee, to be honest.
I totally agree with you, but this committee, I mean realistically, like, I don't think you're going to, you're not going to.
Me at all.
I can't say it. Yeah, you, you, I mean, it's going to depend on what the council wants to do and what referrals are out there, but I don't think you're going to have a regular meeting. Like, you'll probably have meetings, but I don't know if it'll be monthly, but that's.
Sure.
Absolutely. And I was going to add that, that this would be as needed. And then have language in there that the committee must meet within thirty days of the referral, something like that, just so that it isn't bogged down, so that there's a proper, but Mr. Blazer, you were the one that kind of brought this to.
Yeah, I'm kind of surprised it ended up on an agenda, which I'm glad to see, but, yeah, maybe we should refer to the city attorney. You know, do we, is it just a three-person committee that, that we do, or?
I was, I wanted to throw a disclaimer out there before I got asked any questions. I really don't know. I'm sure you can establish the committee as a council. I don't, I mean, I'm assuming you get to establish your own kind of bylaws as well, but I don't, I can't really answer any of those questions.
I almost hate to say that the chairman of each of the three committees, standing committees make up the legislative committee. I don't want to do that to Joe.
Yeah, that's true.
But, you know, I don't know, you know.
But if they, if they meet periodically, and if they meet on a Tuesday, you're going to have representatives here. Maybe they meet, the HR is not meeting on Tuesdays. So maybe they would meet at four o'clock or four-thirty before the five o'clock meeting. And so the person, whoever's on that committee would be here anyway.
True.
It's food for thought.
Absolutely. And, and I think, yeah, it's one of those where I think we can legislatively create it and have the city attorney make it happen, I guess.
Could it be charter ordinance change, I believe? Create it?
It would be. Because we used to have one, then we didn't, now we don't, right?
Right. And I think it spells it out in the charter ordinance. I don't know. That'd be a question for some.
Although, now that I think about it, I think it would be mayor appointment.
It would be mayor appointment unless we establish like every chairman of the, chairman of the committee. That's how wastewater was. If you're a public works chairman, you're automatically on wastewater commission.
But now that's a commission, and commissions and committees are a little bit different in the eye of, of the law in terms of commissions are designed more as a citizen commission versus a standing committee. And I would suggest that this would be more of a standing committee than.
Yeah, yeah. It was just spelled out on our ordinance that our public works chairman would be on the wastewater.
Sure.
We used to have a legislative committee. Isn't that what it was called?
Yeah.
I mean, it was called that.
Yeah, back when there was nineteen.
Yeah, and it got, at the time, I wondered how some of that stuff went to finance, to me. Why is that financed? But that's how we ended up doing it. To go back to have a legislative committee, I'd be in favor of it, I think. Uh, I don't know, to meet periodically or however it's going to be, but is there some parameters, rules that we're going to set that goes to the legislative committee? Versus then, versus, I mean, what finance is getting now, it would go to this legislative committee, that it should be there now, or I think some of us think that anyway. Well, maybe Sue could help us with the makeup of it, and then the parameters and so forth. And then refine it for us to make a decision.
Yeah, I mean, like, you could like direct staff to, you know, write something up as far as, I mean, it looks like, yeah, this would be a charter ordinance amendment, and just figure out, you decide what you want in there.
Yeah, I think it would be a good place for us to have those discussions on ordinances.
Yeah, and really, this particular action item could be that litmus test. If we approve it, then we continue the process. You know, and, and obviously it isn't going to happen tomorrow overnight because, um, it, it, it isn't, uh, uh, obviously charter ordinance needs to be written twice, so, but yeah, just by approving this, I think tonight we'll be taking it to the next level, so. So with that said, do we have any further discussion on this, uh, agenda item? With that, I will call for a vote. Um, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Do we have a motion?
Oh, we don't even have a motion. I, I, I get so confused.
I know, we had a motion.
Explain, do we?
You're in discussion, so.
Do we even need a motion? Can, can it just be direct city staff to put together?
And that's a good question too.
I think a motion would make it more binding.
Yeah.
I make a motion for the creation of a legislative committee.
Second.
Second, that, like, Zerflew, um, any further discussion? All those in favor of this, um, agenda item, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda item passes, we will go to agenda item number five, and that is adjournment due.
Motion to adjourn.
Second by Tom.
By me, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?